920.000, otherwise known as the California Public Records Act, needs to be posted on their website. If they haven't done that, they're in violation of state law. Not that those bullies care, but I think somebody here should also check. There was another incident involving Schroeder roughly six, seven months ago. Supposedly, he was going to write up a report or generated a case number. Yesterday, I contacted the district attorney's office and I was informed that there is no such case. I don't know. It was never turned in. There is no record of it. So I have no idea what this guy is doing. He's callous, he's arrogant, he's ignorant, he's illiterate, he's uneducated. He's a cockroach in uniform, as far as I'm concerned. And there are other additional people to whom I will refer at the next meeting because my time is up.
Thank you. Speaking next, I have April Reed. And April, you'll have three minutes. Please remember to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. A couple of things. I just wanted to remind you all pursuant to Councilmember Kiriyako's statement to me months ago that now that you have Shelby being developed, that it can replace Kenwood. So I want to make sure that's done properly, so there aren't any miscommunications or misunderstandings. The independent said that you guys have enough housing now. If you really are slow development, as you all seem to claim, I don't know about Mr. Smith, but the others seem to claim, then you should be putting off building on Kenwood or canceling it altogether, as I was told it could be if Shelby was being built on. Secondly, regarding CEQA, as I've said before, but nobody has responded to me. If the CEQA was not done properly the first time, or if people were not given the opportunity to comment, like I wasn't, then it should be done over again, especially since there are multiple statements that are incorrect in the original CEQA. And lastly, for this segment, I just want to remind all of you that I was told by Ms. Allen, who is no longer with you guys, that you wouldn't force him to stop the flooding that goes from his property onto the street in front of my rental property, which, as I said before, is a private property. So you guys have the ability to make instructions, assuming it goes forward, which it shouldn't, or to force him to do things that he should do. I don't have a clock, so I don't know what time it is.
You have one minute.
So I would suggest that regarding the flooding, it was three feet, three days after the rain stopped. So it's not going to do any good to the people who would move in there, it doesn't do me any good, and letting him ride on that is really not productive. I don't know what you think you're going to do, but why he's being given all of these cushy agreements when he should move up to certain standards is inconceivable. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor Protem, I have no further public speakers at this time.
Good, thank you. City manager, are there any amendments or adjustments to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no adjustments, but I can move into my city manager's report. It's very short tonight, I just have one announcement.
Sounds good.
And that is, the Old Town Galita Holiday Parade is fast approaching, it's almost here. Join us for this festive event hosted by the Galita Lions Club. It's this Saturday, December 6th, at 6:00 p.m. The parade will take place along Hollister Avenue from Orange Avenue to Kinman Avenue. Couple important things to remember, Hollister Avenue will be closed to all traffic, starting at 5:00 through 8:30, so an hour before the parade starts. That's very important to know if you're going to the parade, but also very important to know, even if you're not going to the parade, Hollister will be closed during that two-and-a-half hours time slot. And then also, there should be ample public parking available in the normal spots, but at the Yardee parking lot, the whole Yardee parking lot is available, and that's at 430 South Fairview Avenue. So again, the Galita Holiday Parade, this Saturday, December 6th, 6:00. We hope to see everyone there.
Thank you. Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. That is item A1, approval of the city council meeting minutes of November 18th, 2025. A2, ratification of mayoral appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission, Public Engagement Commission, and Library Advisory Commission. A3, acceptance of the October 2025 check register. A4, award of purchase orders to California Electric Supply for electrical switchgear associated with the Galita Valley Library Safety ADA and Building Improvements Project. A5, approval of amendment 2 to Professional Design Services Agreement, number 2024-091 with DKS Associates, Inc., for preparation of the 2025 Development Impact Fee Nexus Study Update. Item A6, award General Services Agreement for Park Tree Maintenance Services to West Coast Arborists, Inc. And item A7, Title 16 subdivisions and Title 17 zoning amendments to implement state planning law and provide various minor zoning changes and clarifications in determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Conduct second reading by title only, waive further reading of, and adopt ordinance number 25 next in line, entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, adopting various amendments to the Title 16 subdivisions and Title 17 zoning of the Galita Municipal Code to implement state planning law and provide various minor zoning changes and clarifications, and finding the amendments to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, case number 25-0003-ORD.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to pull any items from consent?
I'd like to pull A6.
Okay. Anyone else? I would like to pull A5. And since you... Shall we do A... Yeah. Well, okay. We'll go with numerical, A5. So that is the professional service contract. And, yeah. So I guess I was interested in the... Let me find the... So in it, it... Oops. My... Okay. So in it, it indicates it's providing a comprehensive assessment and GIS mapping of existing pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and travel, and to use a pedestrian and bicycle travel model to identify a low-stress and safe pedestrian bicycle network throughout the city. And so I was interested to get a little more detail about what that's doing and how it would identify priority sites, and how it would be useful for future work that we do.
Mayor Protem, good evening, Mayor Protem and council. Thank you for the question. So currently, DKS is under contract, and that was approved a couple of months ago, for them to do the bicycle level of traffic stress, the pedestrian and bicycle level traffic stress model for this city. So this tells and informs the city of low-stress corridors. The low-stress corridors are corridors with less connection points with vehicles, so they're used more, kind of like the Class 1 bike lanes. And it also informs us of high-stress corridors that will inform us of potential projects that can be developed with those. The other thing I want to add is that the tool will inform us with actual data and GIS information of these low-stress corridors and inform the current bicycle and pedestrian master plan projects to verify that those projects are, in fact, the projects that we need. And then it'll also develop priorities based on the stress of these corridors.
So if there are new, for instance, one of the things that we'll be facing going forward is a whole lot of new developments, especially, you know, on the eastern side of the city, South Patterson, Glen Annie. How will this sort of influence, affect, or support the impact of those new projects?
So this amendment is amendment 2, and that really looks at all the new projects that are coming in with the county development projects. And so we're going to do a more in-depth analysis of traffic at the intersections and traffic segments that go to the intersection, so it can inform us of the exact mitigation measures we need and projects developed due to all these impacts of the new development off of, for instance, Hollister and Glen Annie.
Okay. So any project like Hollister and Glen Annie that's coming in, this will identify all the various sorts of mitigations necessary to maintain our traffic flow?
That's correct. And we want to make sure we have all of our ducks in a row, and we have all the data and analysis, so that we can then inform the county of what projects we have identified that need to be mitigated due to those impacts.
Great. That's it for me. Does anyone have any other questions? No? Well, thank you.
And Mayor Protem and councilmembers, I'll just add to that, that both this amendment, amendment 2 and amendment 1, that Ms. Gwena also referred to, that also dealt with bike and ped modeling, both were spinoffs of the bigger work that's being done, which is an update of our development impact fees. This work's been going on for about 18 months, and the plan is for that to come back to the council, the whole development impact fee update, with potential fee adjustments in February.
So this is actually, this contract is really also developing our new, next generation of bicycle and pedestrian master plan, isn't it?
It's not developing it, but what we're doing is that we're making sure that all the diff projects incorporate all the projects in the pedestrian and bicycle master plan, so that's all incorporated within those projects.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you like...
On A6, I want to, it's more of a question or request for my colleagues, but we received a public comment letter that was signed on by several local organizations that raised some questions and clarification needed on this proposed agreement that is proposed to be through 2028 for Park Tree Maintenance Services. I certainly want to kind of dig into some of those questions, so my request would be to table A6, to allow some time for those questions.
Well, let's let staff respond first before we choose to table, see if it's accurate, etc.
Good evening, council. My name is George Thompson, I'm the Parks and Open Space Manager. We did receive several comment letters, and the one that you're referring to is from, as you mentioned, several local nonprofit groups. There's a couple of key points that they made. I think that most of the comment letter spoke to what protections do we have in the contract for nesting birds and breeding birds. The contract has blanket language where the contractor, and this is standard for all of our contracts, where the contractor has to comply with all applicable laws, whether it's local, state, or federal. And so that's what the contract has to do. In terms of how this contract is going to work on a practical level, I oversee our park maintenance program, including our tree program, and so I'll be going out ahead of the contractor, scoping the work, coordinating with a qualified biologist to come in during those times of the year when birds are nesting or breeding. They do a pre-work survey, identify any nests, and then, once the work area is green-lighted for the contractor, then the contractor comes onboard to the park. They're not just working unsupervised in our parks. So we do have the contractual protections worked in, as well as the operational protections.
And is that process outlined in, you know, your department policies? I think I asked that question because it's a multi-year contract, and I hear you, but what if you win the lottery tomorrow and then you're gone? So is that process outlined in writing anywhere within the department?
In so much as that staff and contractors don't want to break the law.
Okay.
So harming a wildlife species that's protected, such as most of our migratory birds, not all of them, if we were to do a tree trimming, not do the pre-work survey, identify a nest, and the tree contractor was to go ahead and just cut that tree down, they could be liable. The company that selected West Coast Arborists, we met with their executive vice president a couple of weeks ago, he ran us through their in-house training program, and they have one of the most robust training programs for their staff in the state when it comes to wildlife protection. The company is one of the largest in the state, they have over 1,200 employees, they have a local presence, they already are on contract for our street tree maintenance program, and so this contract tonight is just for our park tree maintenance program. So they do comply with all state, local, federal laws.
Okay. And can you speak to the reference about the Foothills Preserve?
Absolutely. That one is, actually, I'll take the fall for that one. That was an oversight on my part. It was a cut and paste from another document, and we accidentally copied in reference to a Foothill Preserve, which likely is a Foothill Preserve in Ventura County.
And that can get cleaned up?
In terms of the impact on this contract, I think it's a bit of a moot point. The section where that reference is made in the contract is directing the contractor to comply with state and local federal laws as it relates to migratory birds, and then encourage the contractor, if at all possible, to do most of the work outside of the nesting season. And so in our neck of the woods in Southern California, we typically are seeing the window of opportunity to do most of our tree maintenance during the winter months. So generally, September through February. There are obviously some challenges with weather, wet turf, and so we can't compress all of that work into those months. We do need to perform that work throughout the year, but we have those additional protections worked into the contract and our operational model, the contract biologists and qualified professionals that are out there doing the wildlife surveys.
And those operational or department policies, do you... There was also a request to consider complying with the Audubon Guide to Bird-Friendly Tree and shrub trimming and removal. I don't know if you're familiar with that. I'm not familiar with what that is. Is that something that we already do, or that we do something similar?
It's something that we already do. And so that guide was really written for the layperson, a typical residential homeowner that needs to trim their tree. It lays out, you know, when you should do it, if you're not comfortable doing a bird surgery yourself, hire a qualified professional. And so all of those recommendations in that manual are already incorporated into our practices.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you taking the time to answer the questions. I think when we get, when I see a letter like this, it kind of signals to me that maybe there's a disconnect, maybe in communication with the organizations and the city or us as council members. So I appreciate you having the patience for me to go through kind of the broad parts of the letter. I'm satisfied with the responses. I will still follow up with the organizations to just make sure that we've cleared up, you know, some of that potentially miscommunication or just not understanding the full picture. But I would encourage, and I know you have really great relationships with these organizations and others, to also kind of just make sure that we're all in the same, have the same goals, to preserve our parks and open spaces. So I did want to at least lift up the questions that were asked, and appreciate you taking the time to answer them.
Thank you.
Well, actually, we can also say that somebody might, from one of those organizations, might be online and have a comment. But before that, there was one other, a couple of questions that were asked as far as the ranking process and the how we, you know, what should be public as far as how we select them. Would you comment? You saw those letters, I assume?
Yes, Mayor Protem, I did. We received a comment letter from one of the other proposing companies on this contract. And so earlier this year, the department, Public Works Department, released a public request for proposals, which is a standard process that's outlined by our mini-code. Staff followed that process. We have a numerical ranking score that we went through with all of the proposers, various categories, qualifications of the company, qualifications of personnel, and similar types of categories. The company that's recommended for award was the highest-scoring proposer, and so we feel confident this is the best fit for the city and most likely to perform the work according to the contract terms. That said, we also are going to be contracting with other tree companies. We have so many trees in our city that not one company can take them all on. So although the letter writer, the commenter, is not getting the prime contract, we certainly have an opportunity for additional contracts, and I'm going to reach out to them and make sure that they're satisfied with the process.
Okay. Two other things. Actually, this, that ranking formula, that's public, right? It's a transparent...
It is, yes. So we can provide that back to the commenter as well.
Okay. And I guess one other... Oh, were you still? One other thing to point out is that of the total cost of this project, which was, I think, 1.2 million, 1 million comes from a grant. Is that...
I can clarify that portion. So on the budget side, we have a split funding source. So general fund is paying for, let me pull up the numbers right here. While I'm pulling that up, I can talk a little bit about the grant that you mentioned. We received a $1 million grant from the federal government last year. With the new presidential administration coming onboard, that grant looked like it was going to go back to DC, and we wouldn't get the $1 million. Work through the court system, and we still have the grant. A portion of the grant is paying for a portion of this contract, and not all of it. Let me just pull up the funding table. So we have 290,500 of the $1 million that's going into this contract for park tree maintenance. The remaining money in that $1 million grant is going to fund other activities that will benefit our urban forest, such as more inventory work of our park trees, a full canopy analysis of the entire urban forest of Galita. Through that effort, we can look to create goals for replanting, which parts of the city don't have adequate shade coverage, which parts of the city have predominantly older trees that we could expect to naturally die off through time, that would then push that area of the city up for replanting. We can also look at encroachment on utilities. There's a lot of really high-tech things that we can do with this modeling. The other portion of the grant is going to be paying for park tree landscape master plans. And this is a partnership we're developing with Cal Poly at San Luis Obispo. So every single developed park in the city will eventually have a master tree planting plan that can guide our staff and contractors on where trees should go in parks. That will be developed through our collaborative with Cal Poly, but also through a big community outreach effort, envisioning, you know, park meetings with the draft plans, neighbors can come out and give input on that. But that really creates the roadmap ahead for the city of where we should be putting trees, what species of trees, and obviously make it a public process. Our Public Tree Advisory Commission will be heavily involved in that.
That's great.
Thank you. That sounds great. Can we see if there are any people on who want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I've not received any...
What's that? Yeah, for either either, Ms. Gwena, thank you.
Thank you. If any members of the public wish to speak to consent calendar, please use the raised hand feature, and I will call upon you. I am seeing one hand raised by April Reed. Would you like to go out to April?
Sure.
April, you have three minutes, and please remember to unmute yourself. Thank you. Okay. You should be able to speak now, April. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I just heard your ridiculous comments about birds. I sent in a ton of pictures of protected birds on Kenwood, and none of you could be bothered. So the fact that you pretend to be bothered about birds now is ridiculous. Moving on to what I wanted to speak about, regarding parking, which was mentioned last time, there is no sign saying that it's a private street. I'll tell you what.
This is speaking to the particular items that we were discussing from consent. Is this our...
A7.
A7.
All brought up for A7.
All right. Go for it.
Okay, I want my time back.
It's yours.
Okay. I better get all of it back. Regarding parking, there's no sign saying that our street is a private street, and the developer just built it several decades after our houses were built. And this is something that Councilmember Smith brought up last time. The city can give the developer conditions if they want to, and no one said that the city had to give developers a free ride, especially a developer who can't even cut the weeds in the entire field. Second thing that was brought up last time, you still haven't explained the meaning of the stay of appeals, so I still don't understand specifically what that means, so I reserve my right to speak on it later, if and when you ever decide to explain it to me. I want all my time back. The third and last thing is, Councilmember Smith, last time, mentioned the bus schedule, or bus schedules over 20 minutes. Not surprisingly, she mentioned Hollister, but didn't even bother to mention Encanto, which is the primary place she's supposed to be representing. It is over 20 minutes during rush hour traffic. And even if she can't comment on Kenwood, she can still comment on Calusa and Shelby and other properties that are being built in Encanto. I'm highly concerned that she doesn't even, has yet to bother to comment on her own district, even if it isn't Kenwood. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Since she was speaking about item A7, which hadn't been pulled, do we need to at least, do we need to reference that in any way, or the fact that we already read the consent item? I just want to make sure there wasn't something we were supposed to do, since that one was specifically called for comment. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Kiriyako. Yes, I think because we take consent, public comment, collectively, we are good procedurally.
So can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move it.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Great. Have we?
Thank you, councilmembers. Do look in your votes, please, beginning with Councilmember Rayz Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kiriyako.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem, portcastin.
Okay. It passed. So this is very exciting. We're going to recess to the RDA Successor Agency. Clerk, can you please read the item on the consent calendar?
Yes. That is item A, Successor Agency Administrative Budget and Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule for July 1st, 2026 to June 30th, 2027.
Yeah, oh, okay. Let's roll call this, baby. Oh, that's good.
Thank you. Councilmember Rayz Martin?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Porcasden?
Here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I missed that on my, my thing. Clerk, are there any public speakers on this item?
I've not received any speaker slips, and if any attendees on the webinar wish to speak to this item, please use the raised hand feature and I will call upon you. Mayor Protem, I'm seeing none.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll move a consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. We got a vote?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmembers. Please lock in your votes, beginning with Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Porcasden?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, I un, I unpressed it. Oh, well. Is that okay? It didn't show up there. Okay, good. Okay, get ready. We're going to reconvene. Back to the City Council.
Thank you. That takes us to item B1, Adoption of the 2025 California Building Standards Codes. Conduct second reading by title only, waive further reading of and adopt ordinance number 25 next in line entitled An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, number one, amending the following chapters to Title 15 Building and Construction of the Galita Municipal Code, Chapter 15.01 Building Code, Chapter 15.03 Electrical Code, Chapter 15.04 Plumbing Code, Chapter 15.05 Mechanical Code, Chapter 15.08 Administrative Code, Chapter 15.11 Residential Code, Chapter 15.12 Green Building Code, Chapter 15.15 Energy Code, Chapter 15.16 Historical Code, Chapter 15.17 Existing Building Code, Chapter 15.18 Referenced Standards Code, Chapter 15.19 International Property Maintenance Code, and two, adding Chapter 15.23 California Wildland Urban and Interface Code and 15.24 California Fire Code. Adopting by reference the above listed codes by the California Building Standards Commission. And number three, adopting local city amendments to Chapter 15.01 Building Code. And number four, finding that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adopting the notice of exemption.
Okay, you should get paid by the word, actually, from now on. So let's open the public hearing. And Ms. Prossy?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. As we introduced this ordinance two weeks ago, we are here tonight to do the public hearing portion. And as we mentioned two weeks ago, every three years, the building code gets updated, and this is no different. And this time, the building council has added two new codes, which are the fire code and the wildland urban interface codes. And then we are also proposing to maintain all of the existing local amendments that have been adopted in the past, so that we have no changes. And there have been no changes in the last two weeks. And the county did adopt their code, but we're still waiting on getting their code, their copies that are numbered and signed. So once we get those, we'll be coming back to you on consent calendar to ratify their action. So with that, staff is recommending that you conduct second reading by title only, et cetera, is what Mr. Norman had said before. And this time, I do have it all written on one slide, but it is a lot. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions along with our building official, Ms. Beeler.
Okay. Any council questions? The past two weeks, some sort of things have popped up? Okay. Any public questions?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I've not received any speaker slips, and if any attendees on the webinar wish to speak to this item, please use the raised hand feature and I will call upon you. Mayor Protem, I'm seeing none.
Okay. Let's see. I assume no additional questions have emerged in the preceding sentence, so then I will close the public, well, public portion and move to council deliberations. Anyone want to make a motion then? Oh, we'll close the public hearing first and then, closing the public hearing, it's now closed. And can I get a motion?
I'd move to approve the recommendation. Should I state it for, for the record?
Our clerk did read it into the record.
Okay.
So you can move that forward. I know we read it into the record previously as well.
Great. I'd move to approve the recommendation as stated by the clerk.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Please do lock in your votes. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Casden?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That takes us to item B2, Readoption of Electric Vehicle EV Reach Code.
And we will hold therefore a public hearing on this ordinance, number 25 next in line. You want to read the item in?
So I'm not required to read?
Oh, you're not required to read it in?
I misunderstood.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mayor.
Well, open the public hearing. Excuse me.
We good to proceed? All right. Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Councilmembers. I'm just touching in again on our electric vehicle reach code, second reading and public hearing. Our sustainability manager cannot be with us tonight, so he'll just be stuck with me. To recap, Galita's current reach codes, we have an electric vehicle reach code which was adopted in September 2024 and amended this past January. That exceeds the state 2022 code in addition to an energy performance reach code, which we adopted in February of this year as well. Current reach codes will expire with the current building code as we've just adopted. And adopting and updating reach codes was a part of the PER Department's fiscal year annual work program. We also received a green committee recommendation this past September that we proceed with readopting reach codes. And at this past city council meeting, we took our first, first reading and we found that the electric vehicle reach code is considered substantially equivalent to the previous reach code, allowing us to proceed legally. As a reminder, the 2025 electric vehicle reach code, which we have proposed, would amend single-family residential and non-residential building types. The, the base code has now caught up with our multifamily and hotel motel requirements from our previous reach code. So for single-family residential, our standards would, reach code standards would be one level two EV-ready space and one level one EV-ready space if there's more than one space provided. For non-residential, for office, office and retail buildings, we would have 23% of spaces include level two EVCS, which is charging stations in the ground, and 7% of spaces would be level two EV-capable, so having that pre-wiring ready. And for all other non-residential, it'd be even split of 15 and 15%. Just to walk through the basics in comparison to the mandatory baseline for Cal Green, for single-family residential, it's simply listed raceway panel capacity to accommodate a dedicated branch circuit. So this would exceed that 2025 Cal Green mandatory baseline. And this matches our previous electric vehicle reach code. And then for non-residential requirements here, we have what I just previously listed to you, just shown here, that we are exceeding the 2025 Cal Green mandatory baseline, but we are matching the voluntary tier one measures of 30%. And there, there are those voluntary tier two measures, which were 45%, but we've selected to keep it as is. And just a quick review of the timeline, we've had first reading and now potentially second reading and public hearing. We will be submitting, should you approve, to the California Building Standards Commission for approval and review. And we anticipate a January 1st in effect and regulating. And with that, we'll move to recommendation and any deliberation and questions that you may have, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Any council questions? Nope. Okay. Any, I guess, public comments? Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I've not received any speaker slips, and if any attendees on the webinar wish to speak to this item, please use the raised hand feature and I will call upon you. Mayor Protem, I'm seeing none.
Okay. Then I will close the public testimony portion. And any deliberations? Wish to deliberate? Nope. Then I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move recommendations A and B as, as, as listed.
Councilmember Kiriyako, on this one, if we could.
Okay. I'll, I'll move that we hold a public hearing on ordinance number 25 next in line and conduct a second reading by title only, waive further reading of and adopt ordinance number 25 next in line entitled An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, amending Chapter 15.12 entitled Green Building Code of the Galita Municipal Code to make certain local amendments to the 2025 edition of the California Green Building Standards Code, Reach Code, and determine the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
And I'll second.
Great.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Do lock in your votes, please, beginning with Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Casden?
Aye.
Thank you. That takes us to item B3, Consideration of Initiation of a General Plan Amendment, 33 South La Patera Lane, APN 073-050-034, case number 25-0006-GPA.
So I'll open the public hearing now. Preach.
Give me one moment to get the PowerPoint open. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. So we are here today to consider. Okay. Yeah. Had to get the right PowerPoint up there. We already did the building code. So we're considering a general plan amendment and initiation for a property located at 33 South La Patera Lane, just south of the currently under construction train depot on La Patera. You can see the aerial there. The site is 2.5 acres in size. It has approximately 30,000 square feet of office and lab space in three buildings on the site. One of the buildings is referred to commonly as the Daniel Hill Adobe, currently preserved and used as office. It's a historical structure. The purpose of the general plan amendment initiation tonight, it allows for early public input on the idea of an initiation here, and it provides staff with direction to provide, to process the general plan request for further study. And then, but in all cases, the initiation does not mean or imply that requested amendment will eventually be approved. So the specific request tonight from the applicant is to study changing the general plan land use designation for this parcel from industrial business park to industry, office, sorry, office institutional. And their conceptual plan for the future with that, if it were to be authorized, would be to develop live-work residential units within two of the three existing buildings on site without displacing the existing businesses that are there. This is just a brief overview of our current land use map. And as you can see, the purple is Business Park here, and so they would like to change that to Office Institution. So when comparing the existing and proposed uses in land use element table three, table two dash three, there are a lot of similarities between the two, but I wanted to highlight some of the differences between the two, and that's what's on the slide here. So IOI allows a number of additional business professional services and is more permissive with respect to residential religious institutions as compared to, to Business Park. Both designations allow a robust list of retail uses, and they both have similar limitations for manufacturing. Both the designations disallow auto-related, related uses and generally disallow wholesale The recommended standards for building intensity, comparing the two, both BP and IOI have a 30-foot, 35-foot maximum structure height. BP includes a maximum lot coverage of 0.35 while IOI is 0.40. And IOI includes maximum residential density of 20 units per acre. And BP disallows residential uses except for one caretaker unit parcel. For context, I wanted to go over the existing built environment surrounding the property. The property is adjacent to the new train depot, as I mentioned. There are other public transit opportunities along Hollister as well. There's currently no service retail or residential uses in the neighborhood, but IOI could support both in the future. You may recall in June of 2024, council initiated a general plan amendment initiation for 30 South La Patera, which is across the street from this subject parcel here. That initiation was to consider going from Business Park to general industrial, so slightly different than what's proposed today. No further study has been done on that GPA, although they just recently submitted their formal application for, for the GPA, for the GPA, so that process will begin shortly. Also wanted to point out the existing airport safety zones. The property is within safety zone four. It's kind of right in the middle of the various safety zones, so it's a bit more restrictive than safety zones five and six, but a little less restrictive than safety zones one and three. I wanted to point out the residential and non-residential uses are conditionally allowed in zone four with certain density restrictions and other risk reduction design features. If the initiation is authorized this evening, this would be fully vetted out during the formal GPA process, including review by the Airport Land Use Commission for a consistency determination with the. determination with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And as we do with all general plan amendment initiations, we have these five factors that should look familiar to you. Staff has provided some responses in the staff report for council's consideration on these five. And staff is recommending that council authorize initiation of this general plan amendment per this resolution in front of you here. That concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kiriyako?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. For building 1, the 21,000-square-foot building, under the proposed change to zoning on the property, what would be the implications for that building in terms of potential utilization of adaptive reuse? What would people potentially be able to do if they wanted to take out theoretically the robotics and turn the existing building into housing? What would be possible?
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, if it were to change to IOI, residential certainly would be possible. It's an allowed use in that designation, whereas BP is not. The current proposal is for a live-work situation using the two of the three existing buildings. So each of the not historic buildings that are on the site.
Okay. Yeah. Just, I understand that, but sometimes proposals change. And ultimately, what we're talking about is what's allowed and what's not, right? So that's why I was asking that question. I guess my next question is, are there any concerns about, you know, potential conflicts between state law and the airport plan and city policies when it comes to what would potentially be allowable on the site if we changed this designation? Again, I know what the proposal is. But if we get into a situation where we do eventually rezone, rezone the site, developers then have the ability to work within the rules and also within the, you know, the menu of state laws that are available, right? So I just want to make sure I'm clear on, would state law supersede the airport plan? Would the airport plan supersede state law because there's federal aviation potential considerations? Like, who's in charge? Who wins?
Yeah. The state law and the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan would supersede our local regulations. I think in terms of getting to the basis of your question, I did some analysis of what would be allowable under, just looking at, for example, the ALUCP. In this case, it seems to be a little bit less restrictive than our own regulations in terms of things like densities and structure heights. So, for example, based on the ALUCP and the Approach Slope Guide that's in the ALUCP at 20:1 to that runway, in theory, a maximum height of 77 feet, maximum structure height of 77 feet would be allowed under the ALUCP, whereas our land use regulations would allow up to only 35 feet, as an example of structure height. So I think, obviously, when we're changing land use designation, any future development based on that would have to be consistent both with our current regulations, but also state and county regulations and federal regulations and the like. So if it wasn't consistent with one of those other regulations, they would have to alter their project to make it so.
Thank you. Guess last question. The Hill Adobe is actually a pretty good example of old-school live-work building. What do the plans, as we currently know them, envision for that building? Would that building stay in its place? Would that building get moved? We've had some controversy with other historic buildings being proposed for being moved to other parts of the property. And I just want to make sure that we're all thinking about the future of that Adobe. It's a very important part of not just Galena's history, but our entire region's history?
Yeah. My understanding of the concept at this point is that that structure would remain as it is, which is currently being used as an office, and the structure is maintained as a historical structure.
Okay. Great. So my only comment after my questions is, please don't move the Adobe.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you. I was going to ask about that, too, so I'm glad you did. I think what's always a little awkward about these is that we, you know, we're not talking about a specific project yet. It's just the question about studying this change. So, you know, I appreciate the staff report. And even in the applicant's letter, you know, they talk about the importance of the corridor here. And I know we have talked about the corridor and with the Train Depot, you know, what does that mean for what the future vision is for this corridor? So I think the part that... Concern might be too strong of a word, but that I'm thinking about is just how do we think about our process for what a vision or master plan or whatever we want to call it is for this corridor? And then look at this one particular parcel. How does that fit into, you know, those discussions that we haven't had yet, but I know is going to be important? And I think about that especially as we, as the applicant notes that they want to study this for potential housing. You know, whenever I think of housing, I think of people. There's no other housing immediately around there right now. So I think about what would that kind of lived experience be like for someone? And I know that we'll get to those questions when and if there's an actual project. But it just, it leads me to those questions, and I don't know if others were thinking about that as well. I don't know if staff has any guidance about how we should think about that when we're talking about just this one parcel.
Yeah. This is a good question. I think something to keep in mind along that line is initiating, studying this general plan amendment wouldn't preclude council from having those larger discussions, you know, either in the near term or even in the long term. So I think that's important to keep in mind. You know, if there were larger plans that involved multiple parcels in that neighborhood or along that corridor, this general plan amendment initiation wouldn't preclude those conversations from happening.
Okay. And then I guess another question I had, too, that, and I appreciated that you included that more detailed table in the staff report, table 2-3, about the allowable uses. As I recall from the Economic Development Strategic Plan and other discussions we've had, there's continued to be a demand for light industrial space. And so if I'm reading this correctly, that even with a rezone, those kinds of uses would still be allowable there? We're not reducing the availability of light industrial space in the city by considering this.
Correct. Yeah. That's part of the overlap between BP and IOI.
Great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Yes. I'm wondering if staff can remind me if the general plan initiation process starts, does that process happen in parallel with the project or would it proceed separately?
Short answer is it could be both. Usually, an applicant doesn't initiate a general plan amendment without some sort of project in mind. So I'm assuming in this case that the formal general plan amendment application would come in at the same time as a, with a development project of some sort.
Got it. Thank you. And then, just to confirm, I think it's what my councilmember already asked, but just to confirm that it's anticipated that the current uses would be allowed to continue if a rezone happened?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And then in getting to the question, if some kind of housing is contemplated, I'm mindful that we have just recently gone through a housing element process and done a lot of rezones to at least theoretically permit more housing. And we're still in, within that current cycle. And I believe as part of that process, we sort of exceeded the base requirement that was required in terms of the theoretical allowance of future housing that could happen. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's my recollection as well.
Okay. So part of my concern is that as we're sort of mid, sort of mid-cycle in terms of we're still seeing that process unfold, we're a couple of years in. You know, we know that the county also has changes that are right around us. You know, we're still anticipating what those impacts will be. And so it's an interesting conundrum because in a future cycle, we may be looking for these types of opportunities and rezones, but we've sort of just gone through this process and with the community. So I guess it's more of a comment than a question. But I'm, on the one hand, I'm mindful that we've sort of just gone through the housing element process, but also knowing that the next cycle will come more quickly than maybe we think. So it's a, it is a real challenge. Anyways, thank you.
I want to, I thought I'd follow up on Councilmember Smith's comments, that in the last cycle, or the, our current cycle, the HCD essentially required that we use vacant land for, to count for our RENA rezones. Do we, any properties like this wouldn't likely be vacant lands, but do they have, do we have any knowledge or anything if they treat specific plans where it's not just us expecting or saying, hopefully, they redevelop, but where there's a specific plan from willing developers? Do we have any knowledge of how HCD has treated or might treat it in a future cycle?
Mayor Protem, I think I'll give my start to the answer, and then we have Director Amhoff here to finish it off. But my assumption would be is that they would treat it similarly to any other land use document that we have. So like the general plan, there's built-in densities for residential baked into that document. And so there's certain assumptions that they can make from there. I think similar assumptions could be made with a specific plan. It's just for a smaller geographic area.
Mayor Protem, that answer from Mr. Hyfield was exactly right, so I have nothing to add.
I, well, I guess I'm not clear, even though you are, you guys are clear, that when we proposed our, the first time, and we proposed to HCD a plan of what land would satisfy their goals for housing, they rejected it and asked to see land that was vacant, not underutilized. And so I, and I, I'm not asking that you would speculate what will be the standards for HCD in 2032 or whenever the next cycle is, but to your knowledge from other cities, do they treat underutilized land the same if it's in a specific plan? And, you know, and there's something more increased intentionality, let's say, on the part of a city as opposed to just general plan where it's been sitting zoned a certain way for 20 years?
To respond, HCD does not distinguish between land in a specific plan and outside of a specific plan. The distinction in state laws between underutilized sites and vacant sites. And the use of vacant sites changes the evidentiary burden on a local jurisdiction so that if 50% of its low-income housing capacity is provided by vacant sites, then essentially there's a presumption that we meet the RENA. And that is what forced our hand in the current RENA cycle with the adoption of the housing element. But the redesignation of this site would not change that calculus. This site is already developed. It's an underutilized site, so even if more housing were proposed on it in the future or density were increased, that would not, that would not affect the calculation with respect to vacant sites.
Okay. So in other words, for the purposes of hitting RENA targets in the future, this won't help. This won't, this is just aggregate. It's good. We believe in more housing. We think it's appropriate, but we'll still have the same kind of burden of accomplishing rezones of vacant land if the same rules were in place.
The same rules are likely to apply. I mean, any housing capacity does help. We count the capacity on underutilized sites. It's just treated a little bit differently by HCD.
Okay. Councilmember Kiriyako?
Just to jump in, and my recollection is largely similar to Mayor Protem Kasdan's. The one kind of missing piece I think we're not talking about enough in relation to underutilized sites is the presumption, presumptive existence of a willing landowner in this case. There were underutilized sites that we were initially considering in the housing element process. I'm thinking about Via Gero and some of these other ones that we didn't have, you know, we considered, but ultimately elected not to rezone because we didn't have affirmative language from a property owner that they were interested in developing housing. And that was part of that equation of how we ended up rezoning some vacant sites because we weren't able to do as much infill on underutilized sites as we would have liked. I don't know if that's more of a comment, or perhaps you could just confirm by recollection that there was the willingness of landowners that was also a factor in how we got there.
That is a factor, but I think the bottom line here is that we don't need to be concerned about the next RENA cycle or our housing element with respect to this site. The fact is that we will be able to count units that are actually developed. We will get credit for those, and we do have to, we are required to stay on pace through the eight-year housing cycle in the actual delivery of units, or there are potential consequences to the city in terms of how we process projects.
I hear that. I guess all I'm saying is if this were to get past the next stage and you had a project and you start getting close to building permits being pulled, you would be able to have this site appear in our housing element as part of our existing and future capacity.
Yes, that's correct.
So, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Now, I just wanted to understand the context. And I guess just one other sort of observation really, and it's not, it's more of a comment. I mean, it does sound like this is compatible with the goals that we might have for a specific plan, the type of rezone that is being requested. Just as a reminder, when we first were discussing the train station, part of it was its role in terms of how it was going to impact the broader area. That was one of the rationales why we thought it was valuable, that the record of what train stations can do to an area is as a stimulus. So, you know, I guess I just keep that in mind as we go forward with, for you guys too. I assume it's, this is yours, okay. That, you know, that was part of our initial vision. And I would add, you had mentioned, there's no service capacity or retail. We will have, at the train station, perhaps in the future, some sort of restaurant or something like that, as well as meeting space there. And that, that's something to be considered. Okay. So any public comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have received one speaker slip. And as a reminder, if any attendees on the Zoom webinar wish to speak to this item, please use the raised hand feature and I will call upon you. Speaking first in person, I have Natalie Phillips, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Natalie Phillips. I'm with CSA Architects, and I'm the agent for the project. and I'm the agent for the project. I'm basically just here to kind of put a face to the project for you, and we had a great presentation from staff, thank you. I think everybody sees a lot of positives in this potential change, and that's what we're looking for too. We're not trying to do anything drastic, and even if it isn't us, which is important to remember, that if this property were to change hands, it still has to follow all of the rules in place, federal, state, local. So, I think it's really important to understand that. We were talking about like the La Patera corridor. I would love to see the whole corridor come together now, but I don't think that's going to happen quickly. So, I would suggest and request that we have it separated from that overall project, our particular request. And secondly, I just wanted to kind of hit on the fact for the housing element, in this particular area, it would only be 20 units per acre, I believe, if I said that correctly. So, this isn't a big mass housing development that could bring everybody down to city council and get everyone upset. This is a great way to get a little bit of our housing in different areas, and maybe, you know, spawn some new living spaces in this La Patera corridor. So, anyway, just wanted to say a few words for that, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I did have a question, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but tell me if this is wrong. I was just curious, what are the, did you have something in mind for the live-work spaces? Is it dentist's office, or what, you know, I don't know if that's appropriate to ask the specific project?
Am I okay to say that? I know I wasn't really supposed to talk about the project, but nothing specific as far as like what the work would be. But it would have to be something that obviously is small enough and unique enough to have the live space connected to it. I mean, there's all kinds of things. I mean, more often than not, people are working from home. Every single kind of business that you can imagine, people work from home now. So, I just think this is actually a really great potential resource, right next to the train station if they want to, you know, go somewhere else, and this is maybe their second home, or their work home, or whatever it might be.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Karyaka?
Just a comment, I, just since you mentioned the 20 units per acre. As far as I know, there's no restrictions on this site that would make it ineligible for state density bonus law, so it could go denser, I assume, but...
I honestly hadn't even, I'm not going there, so that's why I hadn't really thought about that, but understood.
Just, just, you know, for anyone watching, just want to make sure people recognize that, like, we're aware that these things are possible.
Yes.
But, but thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other council questions in general?
And Mayor Protam, just to confirm, we didn't have, with the clerk's team, that we didn't have any other public speakers?
Confirmed, yeah. Mayor Protam, I'm seeing no further public speakers.
Okay. Then I will close the public testimony portion and move to deliberations. If anyone wants to deliberate, no, then I will close the public hearing.
I'm in queue.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see. Deliberate.
Okay. So, I mean, I, you know, we're not supposed to talk about the project yet, but I think in terms of the, the perceived potential change in land use and what the city would be getting for making this change, I think there's a lot to like about the possibilities here in terms of being able to feather in some density, be able to provide some housing. In a very small area, you have a train station, you have a major transit hub, electric vehicle charging, the Santa Barbara Airport, the Hollister Corridor, Old Town Galita, you have a lot of things in very close proximity. And also, you know, the airport property has some amenities as well. So, I think there's a lot to like about this in terms of being able to potentially allow more housing in an area where there's a lot of jobs. And I think having housing close to jobs is a really good thing. It's good for vehicles miles traveled, it's good for our air, you know, less traffic generated, you know, with longer trips, because you got shorter trips, people being able to at least theoretically work close to where they live, or potentially, if this all goes forward the way we're hearing, potentially just go downstairs to work, or go downstairs to live. So, I, I think in general, I think there's a lot to like here about the possibilities, and I'm happy to support this change.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I'm going to disagree slightly with my fellow council member. I have, I have, I have concern about this corridor more broadly, and our, and our, our vision for it, and having, you know, we're seeing some different requests come in, and it's an important, it's an important corridor. We, we know that this is going to be an important area, and I anticipate on, on our end that we're going to be having a lot of visitors coming in. And this potentially could be, you know, consistent with that vision, but I, I think, I think having a, a public process for, you know, with something like a specific plan where our community has that opportunity to weigh in, what is our community vision for this corridor, I, I think is important. And I realize that there still would be a further process from here, but in light of the extensive process that we've already been through, and that our community already had the opportunity to weigh in on as it relates to housing, you know, my, my preference would be to stick with the, the very long and deliberative process we've just gone through, and, and reevaluate this collectively with a, with a broader vision and discussion.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Yeah, I think my colleagues are giving us a lot to, to think about. I, I certainly share the concern about the importance of the corridor. I think what's unfortunate is this project, or this, this, what we have to consider tonight is kind of forcing us to, to really think about where that fits in our priorities as a council and as a city, because I, I think as we've seen, once you rezone something, you can't take it back. And I, I definitely agree that I would prefer to be having this conversation more holistically about the corridor with a lot of public input, and with thinking about how it fits into, I mentioned the Economic Development Strategic Plan, how it fits into our plans for the train depot, our, what we've already approved with the housing. So, I do find myself agreeing with a lot of what Councilmember Smith has said, while also understanding, you know, the points that the applicant has made in, in what they're looking at with their specific parcel. I think our job as a council is to think about the, the city as a whole, and now I'm focused on this corridor as a whole. So, I don't know where that leaves us. Maybe you're the one that's got to weigh in, weigh in too.
I mean, I guess when I, you know, looking at the, the table that shows the differences between the Business Park versus the IO, what is that? Yeah. What's IO stand for again? For...
Office.
Thank you. It seems like OI. But looking at the differences between what's there, it does seem that it's likely that the office institutional is more sort of flexible with regard to a lot of the things that a specific plan might encourage, and such as residential units and the, and so forth. So, you know, I, I, I'm comfortable with this in part. I think that if we want to see this ensure that a specific plan is considered, it, when we, in February or March, when we look at the work agenda for planning, we can push that up and make sure that that is accomplished on a, on a faster basis. And then they could be proceeding more or less kind of in parallel. So, Councilmember Reyes?
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, I do agree that a lot of those uses are still allowed. I think we're, we are hearing from the applicant that, you know, part of the rationale, or the rationale, is to allow for, for housing. I, I do think I go back to our, our role as council is to be on the city's timeline and not an applicant's timeline. And so, I, I mean, I'm feeling like it's, I would, I would rather us prioritize a process for looking at the corridor as a whole, and then it's possible that this does fit into that. It's, it, that, that's definitely a possibility, but it feels like this piece is coming before that. And unless I hear maybe some more from council or from staff, how those could not, are not in conflict with one another, I think for me, it's raising that we, we need to have this discussion, and we haven't really had the opportunity. And if we move forward with this, there's like an element of this corridor and this plan that we've already committed at least part of ourselves to without that broader discussion.
Councilmember Karyaka?
Thank you. I guess just a couple of points. And, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate the desire from some of my colleagues to have a, you know, a, a robust and deliberative planning process. And I appreciate some of the comments that were made about the housing element process that we just went through a couple of years ago. Just a couple of things I want to point out. During that housing element process, in particular when the Planning Commission and the City Council were workshopping together, we heard a lot of talk about social justice, and a lot of talk about where housing has historically been built, and a lot of talk about where housing has historically not been built. And we, we also talked a lot about making sure that we are doing everything we can to preserve agricultural land and not overly impact our more residential neighborhoods. And so, I'm just trying to, I, I'm just trying to kind of process some, some of the discussion here from the standpoint of, you know, if, if we're not, if we're not going to make choices to put housing where people live and work, and where jobs are, and, and services, and, and all of those things, it puts more pressure on our residential neighborhoods. It puts more pressure to put housing in some other places where historically Galita hasn't grown, or heaven forbid, on agricultural land where we don't really want to grow. I'd also just point out, our, our general plan has always talked about putting housing, you know, in more of an infill capacity and less in residential neighborhoods. So, to me, this is really consistent with planning that's happened over 20 years in our city. I appreciate the interest in a specific plan. Specific plans take a lot of time, they can be expensive. The one, I guess the last thing I'll say is, one thing that Galita does that a lot of other cities don't do is what we're doing tonight, which is to have a general plan initiation process. That adds a different layer of review, a different level of timeline to a project. This project might be even further along, you know, at least theoretically, if there wasn't the GPA initiation hurdle. So, I just want us to kind of keep all of these things in mind. I, I feel that we can walk and chew gum at the same time here. I feel that we can basically take a process where we're going to, right now, we're thinking about thinking about it, and this would just simply allow them to move forward with a project that, you know, will need to go through our process. I think we all know our city process is thorough, our staff have asked lots of great questions, our community asked lots of great questions. And I think that, you know, the, the next RENA cycle will be here before you know it. And I would just hate to kind of stop a process in its tracks that would potentially help us in the next cycle, and help us get some needed housing in the next cycle, and unnecessarily delay it. I just, I don't think we should make the perfect enemy of the good here. I don't think we can make a wrong decision, but I think we can make a better decision. I think the better decision is to proceed.
I, I had a question for staff, is, if that's still okay, I guess, that what does sort of the idea of a specific plan involve in terms of both cost and in terms of timeline? Is, you know, how, let's say if we say, let's put it on the agenda for next year, are we talking about something that is a, you know, massive effort, and perhaps we don't have the money to do, or the time, the capacity to do? Is it a, you know, a five-year program? And what, what is it?
Mayor Protam and council, it's a significant undertaking. It's not a five-year undertaking, it's maybe a one- or a two-year undertaking, but it's a, a big legislative change. We would need a lot of public input. We need a deliberative process before the Planning Commission, and then ultimately before the council to consider the mix of land uses, and there would be environmental review of that change in some fashion. So, it would be, you know, at least a year-long, and more likely a two-year-long process from soup to nuts. And, so that hopefully answers your question.
Yeah. How, it, it also has a cost associated with it, in addition to the timing. Is there, you know, we would hire a consultant, and what sort of, what is that?
Correct. And I think it's very difficult to estimate, just standing here, what that cost would be. We'd probably have to scope the project, put it out to bid, but it would certainly be, you know, in the low six figures probably, to develop that plan and do the environmental review based on other similar kinds of projects that we've seen recently. And of course, there is an opportunity cost in the sense that our advanced planning staff is very busy and has a lot of work to do, and other work that it could be doing. So, there's always the question of prioritization, and what would they not be able to work on if they're working on a specific plan?
Yeah. I, I mean, I guess I'm wondering, you know, part of the trade-off that we're talking about is whether or not to proceed with this project right now, or to postpone proceeding with this one in favor of doing the specific plan. But that latter option depends in part upon us actually being able to do it, not finding out in March that it's unrealistic, and we don't have the capacity, or the funds, or whatever it might be. And...
Mayor Protam, the only other thing that I would note for the council's information is just that, right now, the South La Patera area specific plan is fairly far down the list of items. I think it might be item 15 on advanced planning's list. So, heretofore, the council has not assigned it a particularly high priority, which may simply reflect that the council has identified other work that needs to be done as a higher priority. So, that will be something that the council will have to look at and wrestle with when we bring our annual work program forward. But there are many other things that we want to get done with finite resources.
Well, one last, and I'll, I'll get to you, but one last question. I mean, my recollection is in our budget process, is that we have the things that you were doing that were essentially mandated by HCD or other sources. And then we had a list of our kind of discretionary projects, of things that you would get to once you accomplish those sort of mandatory things. As far as I know, we have not addressed a single one, if I'm, if I'm recalling correctly, of those discretionary items. You're still chugging along on the mandatory list. Is that correct?
Well, that's not entirely correct. We do, for example, this year, we're working on our short-term rental ordinance, which is not a requirement. But you're correct in general in that the state mandates and really addressing new state laws has dominated the work of the Advanced Planning Division. And that's true with the Title 17 amendments you saw tonight on consent. It's true with the ADU amendments that you'll be seeing at your next meeting. There are, and of course, the housing element and housing element implementation work is also largely driven by new state laws and the need to address and implement those laws locally.
So, is it likely that the capacity for advanced planning will be, for additional non-kind of externally mandated projects, is likely to be similar next year as it is this year?
If, if this legislative session is any indication, the state legislature is not slowing down on its rethinking of land use and housing law in the state of California.
Okay. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
My question is going to be about the, just the timeline, and I think staff... I think staff talked about this, but if you could remind me in the report. So what we have tonight is to adopt the resolution initiating the process. The next step would be the actual project. So, or I just want to understand, like for us, for lack of a better terminal, well, how many bites of the apple do we get at this? To, to have time to have, you know, think about, is, is it a priority for the council to look at this corridor? Where is, where would that be on the timing with the work, with the department work plans? And then if this moves forward?
Mayor Protam and, and council, so the most likely path forward, which Mr. Highfield touched on previously, is that if the council initiates this general plan amendment tonight, then the applicant will file a complete package, including the general plan amendment application itself and other specific entitlements that it needs for its project. And it would go through a unitary process that would be processed by our current planning division, which is also very busy, I might say. And we could go into detail on all the work that they're doing, but they will process projects first in the door essentially and, and move them forward through that process as quickly as possible. There would be environmental review for this project as well. It's hard to say at this point what that would look like, what level of environmental review, but depending on the level of environmental review, we could be looking again at like a year-long process realistically to get through Planning Commission and then back to council. This would require council action because there's a legislative component. As Mr. Highfield touched on, it would also have to go to SB CAG as the Airport Land Use Com- as the Airport Land Use Commission to review that general plan amendment against the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. But those steps would all be feathered in to the basic city process that would involve design review, planning commission, and then ultimately council for, as the highest level decision-maker for the entire action.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I think that for me satisfies a, a little bit of like how much time we have, what different steps of, of further public input there will be, as well as time for council to then think about where does this fit in the work plan? And, you know, council is not saying if we move forward with this that we would ultimately approve either the project or, or what, what they're requesting. It's just the initiation of that. So I want to make sure that the public and the applicant understands that too, because I do remain, I do still have a lot of questions just about what, what we should be thinking about as a council about this whole area. And by then, you know, the depot will be open and we'll have more information too about how that is going to work. And hopefully we see Amtrak service coming in too. So, I mean, there's a lot going on in this corridor and we really only get so many or one or so many chances to really think about a vision for, for the corridor. So that, that's really my ultimate concern. But thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just, just a quick comment. I've really appreciated the additional discussion. The, the one thing I'll add is in terms of a lot of things coming down the pike in this corridor, there's also some things that we want to do that we haven't been able to do for financial reasons, such as the sidewalk and roadway improvements. New development can play a role through development impact fees and helping to subsidize and make those things happen. I'll just point that out. We have a, a willing landowner here who's trying to help us meet our housing needs. And yeah.
Okay. I guess. I, I would just add as for the applicants is that none of what you've heard suggests, I don't think from anyone, that the ideas that you're proposing are undesirable or going in a, in a bad direction. It's just whether, since we haven't thought through yet our vision for the area, it's just, would it be hypothetically altered if we had that vision? But, but, but the specific ideas you have in mind sound, you know, fine. Okay. Then if there's no other comments or questions, I will close the public hearing. And can I get a motion?
I'm happy to try and make a motion for approval. I'm looking for the language. Is it in the slides or do I need to go back to the top of the staff report? There it is. I found it. I'll move that. We move it, adopt resolution number 25, next in line, entitled A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, Initiating the Processing of an Applicant Requested General Plan Amendment to Change the Land Use Designation of 33 South Lopatera Lane, APN 073-050-034, from Business Park IBP to Office Institutional IOI, and Finding That the Initiation of a General Plan Amendment is Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, Case Number 25-0006-GPA.
And can I get a second perhaps? Or maybe just one and a half?
Oh, second.
Okay.
Thank you, councilmembers. Please remember to lock in your votes, beginning with Councilmember Reyes-Martin.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Kiriyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Mayor Protam-Casdan?
Aye.
We're, we've moved to council comments, standing committee reports. Do any councilmembers have? Oh, Councilmember Kiriyako? Oh, yes, that, I'm sorry. I didn't, I wasn't looking at the...
So I have a, a request for concurrence. A few years back, our, our city and, and Councilmember, Mayor Protam-Casdan will remember this well, because I think he was, he was part of making this happen. We did a, a letter of support for Juana Flores, the, the Galita grandmother who was put into a, a situation where she had to be deported. And I would like concurrence from our council to resubmit an updated support letter for the Protect Patriot Parents Act that Congress member Carbajal has authored and is trying to get through Congress. He's also working on a, a private bill in the House to try and work on Ms. Flores's situation. I was going to ask for concurrence to give staff direction to prepare a letter like that. And if it's appropriate, given our legislative platform, to just go ahead and do it, then I would be fine with that. And if we want to bring it back to council, if that, the staff feels that's the best approach, I'd be more than happy to bring it back to, to council for a vote as well.
I would support that.
Yeah. I'll bet you it's consistent with our platform.
Yeah, I think. And I want to, I want to acknowledge that you, you were one of the original people that helped.
I appreciate that. That's thoughtful.
Mayor Protam and councilmembers, I'm Councilmember Kiriyako. Yeah, we did, I did hear about the request previously and we talked about it internally. Our alleged platform coincidentally is coming forward to the next council meeting. So I think it's just as easy for us to put this on the agenda. I think the mayor probably does have authority to sign it, but we'll put it on the agenda and it'll either be on consent or make it a 10-minute item so you can shine a light on it and get direct, get clear direction that you're all in support of.
It would be nice if we could be in a position where she would be able to sign it, you know, given she has, I mean, they'll participate in, in tonight's meeting, but I know this is an issue she cares about a lot too.
Yeah. So we'll try for the next meeting. Is there some urgency here? I think we can probably get it on the next, next...
No, there's not.
She's been deported. She was taken to Los Angeles.
But for the act, but for this...
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's up for a vote. Right away. I think we have time.
Until the midterm.
Okay. But we can, we can certainly bring it back before the end of the year just to...
Yeah, I, I think that would be great. I mean, just in terms of building some, some energy and support behind it.
I, my request is for concurrence, and I've already talked to staff about this, is we received, I received a request, I think others have as well, from EDC to consider a resolution opposing offshore oil drilling. The, there's a proposal from the federal government to open up offshore areas of California for drilling, and we have in the past done similar resolutions. There is an urgency on this one. The, the proposal's open for public comment until January 23rd. So we would need to submit our comment by then. And so if there's concurrence, I know staff is prepared to bring something forward.
I'm happy to lend my concurrence.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, this would be though, maybe not like a proclamation. This, this, you're talking about submitting a public comment to the federal government as part of the record opposing this executive order or, or regulatory action. So...
Right. The county and other, other jurisdictions in California have done a resolution approved by council and it has like a cover letter signed by like their mayor.
We can certainly look at that model. And if that's what others have done, we can, we can send you something.
Probably. And we could probably also do that at the next meeting as well. There's some urgency on this one, I understand.
Yes.
So we'll look to get this on the 1216 agenda.
Thank you.
A council, yeah, but a councilmember Smith?
Oh, yes. Just a brief comment really, sort of in light of what's been brought up, I just wanted to acknowledge that I did hear that Milpus canceled their holiday parade. And just wanted to acknowledge that there is, you know, I think there's still a lot of fear in the community. So I do hope for those who are not as fearful, it's all the more reason, you know, I hope people do, who feel safe enough will show up for our parade and, and support our old town businesses. But I just, I just wanted to acknowledge that because, you know, I know that was a difficult choice for the, for the Milpus community, but I do hope we can have a, a good, a good parade, a happy parade, and all the more reason for those who may feel safer to, to show up and, and support.
Yeah. And just to follow up on that, as far as Juana Flores, this is a grandmother who has a child who was in the military. And whenever, whatever anyone might have heard during the election as far as who would be targeted, I believe it was criminals and so forth, were the focus of where deportations would be aimed. I don't recall hearing grandmothers of, and having children in the, in the service, so... Anyway, I have a, a separate thing. And this is reflects Gersh Park, that they were putting in a new lighting that was going to replace the diesel lighting and for instead a solar. And they were asking about the potential for the costs, the, the staff costs tied to the permit process to be waived. And Ms. Prossy showed there, provided four examples of previous actions, Fairview Gardens, the fermentation festival, would have liked to have gone to that, the Holly Pot Road name, Gersh Park Building, and a Christ Lutheran Adult Daycare Center were examples, previous examples where the costs, the staff charges were waived. I think the costs are supposed to be in the order of $7,000, but apparently for the city, we would need to have a request for, for this to be taken.
I think that was also done with the Islamic Center a number of years ago.
I, it sounds right. Anyway, could I get, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Well, if, any other comments or anything? Okay, then city attorney, do you have anything to report? Okay. Then Mayor Perotti, get well soon. And we'll see you soon. Okay. Good night.